It is 6:50, calling to order the Finance Commission meeting on February 29. Please do roll call.
Chair Giuliani.
Here.
Vice Chair Rossi.
Here.
Commissioner Quaid.
Here.
Commissioner Ho.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez is not in the chambers.
We have a quorum. Any public comments?
We currently have no public comments in person or on Zoom.
Thank you very much. John, back to you.
Thank you, Chair. So I would like to start off with the discussion. First, I want to bring up item number, item number two. The year-to-date through January is really just an informational item for the Finance Commission at this time. That information will be incorporated into the third quarter results when we, when we issue that report. I'm sorry. So the third quarter report generally will probably be in May. And the reason for that is so we wait through, you know, March 31st. And then it generally takes us about 15 to 20 days for the accounting to make certain we've got everything captured up through that point. You know, so we're reconciling the bank accounts to make certain we've captured all the activity as an example of that. And then, and then from there, then we can start preparing reports, presentation, everything follows suit after that. And so it, it will generally fall, probably the first counts are commission meeting in May. And, and that's hence why I make that statement.
So, John, I was going to ask, as we've requested reports that show expected actuals at a more detailed level.
Yes.
So you're saying we wouldn't see that till May?
That is correct. That'll be, that'll be in that report.
Is there?
Well, that report will be structured that way, I should say.
So I guess I'm concerned that that's too late.
Okay.
So wanting to understand why we can't do that for the mid-year financials earlier than that.
So fundamentally, what I try to do is I try to keep the reports consistent. In other words, what was presented last week and what's being presented now. So it's really just simply, I don't want to have, you know, two different reports, if you will. That, that's really the only reason.
I understand, but I think the discussion last week was that the report that we have in the mid-year, this right now, is insufficient.
Okay.
So, and had actually said, one of the issues with the mid-year appropriations was making decisions with insufficient information.
Okay, okay.
Um, I, I think I just wanted to add that I think on our budget policies, it does ask, it does provide that monthly budget updates will be provided to the city council starting in the spring of 2023.
So, so we did change that. So we actually changed from monthly to quarterly. And so we, we started that in this current fiscal year. I want to say, so the first, we, we started doing it for the first quarter, you know, year-to-date through September. And then the second quarter is going to be, you know, year-to-date through December, which is really the mid-year at that point.
So was that voted on by the council to change it to quarterly?
It was agreed upon, but I, I, I can't give you specifics. To be honest, I don't remember.
But, I mean, that is a policy decision to decide to move from monthly financial reporting to quarterly financial reporting. So if it was voted on by the council, I would like to know what the vote was and who voted for that.
Sure, a- and we can definitely look into that. But, so that, that did take place, a- and that's what we're, that's why we're seeing this on a quarterly basis.
It was voted.
Right, I mean, if it was agreed upon, that's still not a vote. And for a policy change to be made, it would have to be a vote by the council, not informal agreement.
Understood. And so we'll look into that. I, I, I don't have an answer off, off the top, but, but I'll definitely look into that and follow up with the commission.
Thank you.
A- absolutely. Okay, so Stephanie, if you could put the presentation up. Also, let me just follow up there. I'm happy to produce that report for the commission, by the way. So if the commission wants that, I have no problem putting that report together.
Right.
So give me a couple of days and, and I'll, I'll get something sent out. Absolutely. So I apologize for any confusion on that. Okay, so we're going to talk about the, the mid-year budget review. So the, the purpose of the review, again, is to review the first half of the year, to see how revenues are tracking with estimates, to review our spending and seeing if we're in budgetary expectations, and gearing up for the upcoming budget process for fiscal year '24, '25. The, the, the mid-year adjustments are generally their true-up items or unanticipated activity that occurred, along with carryovers related to capital improvement plan projects on there. So this table here is just simply, we always start out with the mid-year. We always start out at the, the end of last year to see what changed from what we anticipated. And it's a starting point as we roll into this year. So in this table here, this was the original adopted budget. And, and here are the year-end results for last year. And, and so as, as you noted, the, the expenditures exceeded revenues in transfers by $996,000, pretty much a million dollars. And, and that was really driven from several factors. We had approximately a half a million dollars of retro invoices that related to prior years. So last year at mid-year, we had a huge amount of cleanup. And last year, the mid-year adjustments were about $2,800,000 in the general fund. But really, the, the thing I want to focus on, it was, so within community development, we had what we referred TransTech, RingCon, and InterWest. And those are related to basically the contract services we have for permitting in there. And because of that, that has, that it obviously very much materially impacted our spending last year. And, and then of course, the JPIA invoice that was a one and a half million dollars. But the one and a half million dollars, so the amount of that that was borne by the general fund was around $900,000. The other funds absorb the other, the remainder of it, if you will, on there. And so we ended up with a, a, a total fund balance of $23.6 million on there. The next table.
Can I, can I ask a quick, quick question, Chair?
Mm-hmm.
So, so this is last year's results, so last?
This is last year, yes.
So '23, we thought we were, we budgeted for a $502,000 surplus.
Correct.
And we ended with a $996,000 deficit.
Yes.
So we were off by 1.5 million.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure I understood that.
Oh, did I?
You're on slide four, I think.
Yes, yes. Okay, I didn't think I touched that. Okay, so here, this is, this is just the, the year-to-date through December. And we're breaking this, and that's a fairly high level at this point for revenues and, and operational expenditures. And we're comparing the first six months of this year to a year ago, six months in here. And just a few things to just kind of point out in here. So the property tax remains strong, and we were anticipating it to be strong. The sales tax, we were anticipating to be strong, but it has softened a little bit. And so in January, I was getting updates from our sales tax consultant. And so you'll see as one of the mid-year adjustments in there that really reflects about a $262,000 combined for our local measure and our Measure A sales tax. And so this is kind of in, in line with that, where you see this $154,000 reduction compared to the prior year as of now. But the one caveat there is there can always be timing differences of when we receive revenue. So there could be timing issues related to this as well on there. The other thing I wanted to point out here is in the other revenues, other taxes and revenues category. So that really comprises other taxes, use of money, revenue from other agencies. And the, the revenue from other agencies, in other words, like we're billing, whether, you know, it's Caltrans or we're billing, you know, Metro or money that we received from other federal agencies. That's always referred to as revenue from other agencies. That is, out of that $331,000, that is the largest component. So out of that $331,000 favorable variance, that's really be, the, the number one thing that's contributing to that is revenue from other agencies. Then, then looking at the expenditures here for wages and benefits, you'll see that our wages, wages and benefits increased when we compare the two periods together, increased by 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million dollars. That is, that is due to salary increases, and it's also related to overtime costs primarily.
Can you break this down for me a little bit?
Sure.
So first, I, I mean, in the budget, I have, I, I pulled it up, and the budget, it was actually $27.1 million for the wages and benefits.
I'm, I'm sorry, what, what, on, in the budget document?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, hang on. Uh, what, what page were you looking on?
Uh, 419.
Page 19?
419.
Yeah, so I guess page 16 in the budget document.
Okay. So I'm looking at page 16. What specifically are you referring to?
Oh, it said that the proposed was for 27.1. It's $400,000 difference.
I'm sorry, I'm, it may not be on the right, same page as, as you, so I just want to make certain. Let's see, so this is draft, so this is probably a different, different page. Let me see if I can track that down. Give me a second here. Within the budget.
That's, that's a, yeah, there are a lot of budget documents. John, could that possibly be the, one of the drafts prior to the reduction of the, the approved headcount?
It really depends on, it depends on the timing of when this document was, was done. I can't really, unfortunately, I can't really, I'm sorry, speak to that. There, there were adjustments for vacancies. And the, the impact in the general fund of that vacancy savings was a million six, sure, sorry. Was approximately $1,677,000 on there.
So the, so the reason I ask, well, it's not, I'm not that concerned about the 27 million. But, you know, what we had budgeted for 2022, 2023 was 24 million. And, and I think the actuals were about that as well. So then when we increased the 20, to the 27 million or the 26.7, it was also increasing the staffing levels, it was adding new positions. So.
So I know we, we added approximately five positions. There was originally, the request was higher, and I know they pared it down to, to approximately five positions on there. Off the top of my head, I don't remember all the positions that were added, but there were, there was approximately five.
Sure, so, okay, the reason I'm asking, the, but the actuals for 2022, 2023 were for closer to 145 positions. The actual spend.
Okay.
Was for 145 positions. Because that's how many people we have, that was, because we have, positions have been added over time in the last three years.
Right.
So, and it's been added to the budget. So the actual, though, reflects your actual staffing and salary that was spent last year at a staffing level of 145. Well, the actual spent would not include open positions. The spent would be only on positions that are filled.
So, so in the, if you, are you referring to a specific page within the financial reports? I, I need to make certain that I understand what you're looking at, because I'm not quite certain what. I understand what you're saying, but I'm not certain I have to reference the documents to.
What were the actuals for salary and wages last year?
Um, let's see, I don't know if I, let me see if we have that. It, the problem is, it's, the, it probably is, but the way it's grouped, I may have to break it out. So I'm looking here, let's see. Give me one second here. So, let's see, so the way that, the way that they're breaking down the expenditures, they're not breaking it down into salaries as, as you're.
For wages and benefits.
Yes, for wages and benefits. They're really, they're breaking it down in general government, public safety, community development, community services, public works, capital outlay. That, that's how they're really breaking down the cost within the, within the financial report, as referenced on page 17 of the ACV there. So that's, and then, let's see here, if we have any further breakdown in here that I'm not thinking of.
Okay, so, do you have a sense of last year's wages and benefits were, the actuals?
I can determine what that is. I, off the top of my head, I, I couldn't even begin to answer that question.
Okay, and then, so, you know, right now, for the first six months, it looks like it's tracking at, you know, it would be over what's been budgeted. But I don't know how much of that is, like, what's front-loaded?
When you, when, when, what was from?
For, no, for wages and benefits. So looking at column, you know, the first column, wages and benefits, 26.7 million is the budget.
Right.
For the second column, it's 14.8 from July to December.
Correct.
So if that's, if you annualize that, it would be in the, yeah, 29 million.
Yes, so one of the things, so there is, there is a component in there that is front-loaded. And that generally has to do with the CalPERS unfunded liability. So we always know what that is upfront. We usually pay that unfunded liability annual amount at the beginning of the year, because we get it, we receive a discount for doing so.
How much was that?
Again, off the top of my head, I couldn't, I couldn't answer that question.
So, I mean, and I think this is where the frustration is for me, because, you know what, I think it's 65, two-thirds of the budget is salaries and wages.
Correct.
And there is confusion around what's happening here and not having detail. So this is a summary document. By just looking at a summary document, you go, okay, that would be, and, and having no expected, right? So said, okay, that would be, you know, 29 million dollars. That's over budget, but I don't know if that is over budget, because I don't know if, how much of that was actually related to CalPERS. And then to have an understanding of how it relates to last year. Because, and again, what I'm asking is, in the budgeted amount, it included new positions that were on top of existing open positions. So when I back out and think about actuals, actuals reflect what are filled positions and what's actually been paid out.
Yes.
So this is, I'm having trouble doing apples-to-apples comparisons without more detail into what's been going on. So it's hard for me to understand how much of it was because of salaries, how much of it was because of overtime versus CalPERS early funding.
Sure.
John, I'm going to piggyback on that question, or that statement, and say, we have about $11,900,000 to pay for salaries and benefits for the rest of the year. Will that get us to June 31?
We are generally, yes. So, so when the budgets develop, you know, and I brought this up during the June budget development, budget workshops. So we really track the, these costs very accurately. And specifically, so, you know, with the, the, at that time, the issue was brought up about vacancies and, you know, how are you handling that? And so when we went through all the vacancies, the, in other words, these were authorized positions, they're not adding positions. These are existing positions. And the process was, we worked with management services, HR, basically, and the departments to come up with, when do we really think these positions are going to be filled? Once we had that information, we then, we prorated those costs. So if someone, we thought someone was going to be hired in August, okay, there's 11/12ths of the year. You know, it was that mechanism, and it, and it's very detailed, very granular on that. But what we can do, so for, this is, this is obviously much higher level, you know, where we're talking overview of the general fund. So we, we can go and develop much more detail. You know, as detailed is really, quite frankly, the, the commission.
Well, while, while I appreciate that it's more, yeah, I mean, we, we need to see more information than this. I mean, this is very superficial level of information. And you, while you say you did a detailed analysis of when the positions would be filled.
Yeah.
Our staffing levels haven't increased. The budgeted staffing levels have increased.
Yes.
And then we've talked about vacancy rates, and I think it's a little bit, something interesting is that, you know, we increased the staffing levels over the last few years by 18%. And then we talk about vacancy rates based off of the increases that we made. But our staffing levels haven't increased. So that's what I'm trying to understand, like, we, we should have not just enough money for the rest of the year, but we should actually have more than enough.
Right.
Right.
And again, but with, when we're looking at this data here, so granted, this is high-level data.
Right.
There are certain costs that are front-loaded with this on there. And the, the UAL is always a big dollar amount. You know, it's always, you know, several million dollars on there. So, so that has a material impact with this number.
So, and I think one of the things, we've discussed it privately, but I think one of the things that definitely recommend is
Yeah.
not only looking like the quarterly reports, but getting a better sense of budgets on a quarterly basis, because revenues and expenditures are not even.
Right, they're nonlinear, yes.
Correct, so, you know, and, and one of the challenges with reports like this, it, you know, it, if you all know that certain revenues come in, in May, and you'd be like, oh my God, it's, well, it looks horrible.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And certain expenditures are hitting early.
Yeah.
You know, and again, looking at this, you know, the quickest way you'd say, oh, okay, so 29 million. So I think having budget reporting that shows a little bit more on a quarterly basis and why I've been asking for the variance by the period, because it gives you a better sense of that.
Right, and we can, we can definitely incorporate that. So, so even with this.
So, John, pardon me, you still have to answer my question. We have $11 million left in salaries and benefits. Will that get us to June?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Do you think the 26.717 instead of something lower?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't.
You think the 26.717 instead of something lower?
So the only, the only thing that's going to really impact this would be if we have additional vacancies. So in other words, if we have different staff leaving, obviously, that's going to impact these numbers.
But, but again, I mean, the staffing levels have not increased. It doesn't matter how much you budgeted for, if you're actual staffing, so.
So what I'm, what I'm referring to, if staffing levels decrease, that's what will impact this.
No, no, I understand, but the budgeted number was for increased staffing, for, for full staffing.
Yes, for the five, for the five position, yeah.
No, it's more than the five positions, because if we have, if we have.
We only added, we only added five.
I understand, but budget to actual, right? So the actual for last year was for 145 employees, 146 roughly.
I, I don't have the, I don't have the information here to respond to that.
And then the actuals, so that was the actuals for last year, and the budgeted for this year was 173. So it's not just about the five additional employees, you have to take the whole look. You have to look at 100, what, what you have is your actual staff versus the budgeted staff. So it's not five vacancies.
Well, so, okay, let's, let's, let's back up for a minute here. So if, if you're talking about actuals for last year, you have an incomplete picture for this year, we're only six months through the year.
Yeah.
So, so it's, it's an apples and oranges if you, if you're going to look at actuals to where we are now. This report reflects the actuals for six months of '23 versus the six months of '24.
Right.
On there. If, if the conversation or the, the question is regarding the budget, you know, how did the budget change from one year to the next? We added five additional positions.
That's not what I'm asking, that's not what I'm asking.
Then I, then I misunderstood the question.
The, the very simple one, again, is last year.
Yes.
The actual amount was, you don't know, but whatever it was. The difference between last year's actuals and this year's actuals shouldn't be that different.
You're talking about in terms of headcount?
Correct, headcount.
Okay.
It shouldn't be that different, because your headcount hasn't actually increased.
So there's a difference, John, at 14.8 million for year-to-date wages and benefits for this year. Last year, where we had similar level of employment, employees, it was 13.4.
So that's. What, I have to ask you, what are you referring to? I'm looking at the presentation.
Wages, wages and benefits. So column two.
On the presentation.
Yes, under expenditures.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, so you have, so last year, okay, so you had the, last year, we had 13.4
Correct.
of costs for wages and benefits.
Correct.
This year, we have, right now, 14.8
Right.
in there. And so the drivers of this are generally going to be three components. It's going to be, you know, salary increases that were based on the negotiations that were approved prior year or whatever. They're also going to be based on increases in the UAL or the unfunded liability annual contribution. That is also going to be impacted with this. And the other aspect of this that's always a variable is overtime. That will also be a contributing factor to.
So breaking down the 1.3, 1.4 million dollars increase, approximately, how much goes into each bucket?
Sure, so with respect to that, let's see here. The, the, with respect to that, give me a moment here. So the bulk of this, the, the breakdown, and I'm being in very high level. So the salary, the, the, of this 1.3 million, the bulk of this was about 863,000 increase in salaries, approximately 430,000 in overtime. And those two components amount to about $1,293,000 of the total of the $1,376.
Can you say it, the overtime, again, I'm writing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so the overtime was approximately 430,000.
Okay, and then the UAL?
Um, I don't have that
Okay, that's fine.
with me, and I apologize for that, and I'm happy to get that.
No problem, perfect.
We just, we can assume it's the balance, the difference between
Yes.
the two numbers.
Yeah, and I really just kind of focus on the, the material things of that number, so I apologize for that.
Thank you.
So the percentage increase overall, John, for salaries was?
So the percentage increase overall, so in public safety, the increase is, is 5%. For miscellaneous, it was 3% for what we refer to as non-sworn miscellaneous employees.
So we can expect something similar for 2024, 2025?
That is correct, yes, that is correct.
Okay. And you already answered the question, and I'm going to check, check your answer one more time. Your belief is that we will not go over budget.
That is correct, so, so in the '23, '24, these increases were baked into those calculations. Yes, yeah, so generally with the.
What do you, what do you mean, that in '23, '24, they were baked into the calculations?
Yes, so when I develop the personnel budget, we have, we basically have like salary schedules, and, and they're, they're posted on, on their website as well. And so when I say that we have detailed budgets, we have extremely detailed personnel budgets. And so every position falls into either a salary schedule or their contract. You know, like, for example, city managers, a contract as opposed to a salary schedule or elected. There's a, there's a few groups that are a little bit different. Everybody else is within a salary schedule based on a bargaining unit. And so when we develop the personnel budget, we're literally taking the prior salary schedule, and then we are bumping everything up based on MOU negotiations, you know, the approved, approved agreements that will go into effect in that fiscal year. In addition to. In addition to that, in the salary schedules, like you'll see steps like something like A through F. So we also anticipate when, when, in a filled position, when that position may jump from say step C to step D, for example. So we take that into consideration as well. And so with these, then we develop what we refer to as our base salary. Then we look at all special pays. We look at allowances in there. Then we pull information from insurances as well. And then from there, we're doing calculations, you know, for taxes and things like that as well.
So John, my confusion is if I look at the fourteen million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand that was year-to-date of July through December actuals. Okay. And only small portion of that was CalPERS related.
Front-loaded, yes.
Front-loaded. But what was the total CalPERS name?
So again, I'm going to have to come back. I don't have the, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Perfect. That's fine. That, I'd be interested to know that. So we can.
Absolutely. And I, and, and we can send that out to the entire commission
Perfect.
on there. Absolutely.
What, what I'm trying to get to is, is a comfort level where I can look at our mayor and tell her that we believe that twenty-six million will not be exceeded in salaries and benefits.
Sure. And one of the things I've also did with the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four that hadn't been done in the past, I separate the UAL from regular PERS retirement. So it has its own line item.
I remember.
And that's, and that's intentional on there. So, because I like to discern that. And, and the reason for that is with the UAL as opposed to regular PERS, the UAL will always exist if, if we had no more employees, we went down to zero. That UAL would still exist. It's historical. It's based on historical on there. And because of that, I always want to keep that as a separate line item from every other calculation so that it jumps out.
But John, are there any other drivers for this increase?
There's probably a few smaller ones, but those are, those are really the material ones and, and that's why I bring those up.
And there was, but there was a significant increase in healthcare benefits, wasn't there?
There, we did anticipate increased health insurance, yes.
You anticipate, you anticipated the increase, but was it realized?
I believe that it was. I would have to go back and look at the contracts. So, so when I'm going through, you know, and again with the personnel, I'm getting estimates, you know, so in this case from HR, you know, what do we anticipate? You know, for growth, growth rates in, in health insurance. And, and then I'm also basing that, that's based on actuals from the prior year.
So sure, but so when you did the budgeted though, did you do it based off of the budgeted headcount or the actual? So.
So.
I'm, I'm trying to understand because there was about a million dollar increase. So I mean, we went from like one point five million last year for health insurance cost total to about two point six million in the budget. So I'm trying to understand when you were doing the budgeting, do you do that based off of a, you projected FTE or how are you doing that?
It's, it's actually a twofold part. So it's, it's based on actuals. So in other words, if we, for all the filled positions, it's based on the prior, you know, the existing costs at that moment plus the growth factor. So, you know, the growth factor, I usually am looking at eight percent. I'd have to go back and look at the calculation to see what the actual number was.
One point five million to two point six is not an eight percent growth factor. So my question is, I mean, we are doing the budgeting, are you doing it based off of headcount or projected headcount?
I'm based, I'm basing it on two things. So the first control point is all total authorized positions, number one. The second is actual positions that are filled because different people have different insurance plans. And so there's different dynamics across the board for all people that are employed with the city. So, so that's one component of the calculation. The second component of the calculation are for the vacant positions and making assumptions about which insurance plans there, those are likely to be.
I understand that.
Okay.
But so in the budget, it is for vacant positions as well?
Oh, yes, very much.
Okay, that, that's what I'm, that's what I was trying to understand. So.
Yeah, it, it is.
Okay. And were there any changes made in healthcare benefits this year?
There were changes. There, there's always changes. There's always assumption, uh, health insurance grows.
No, but were there any changes made to the plans that would have impacted the plan costs?
So I believe that there was. But I couldn't speak to all of those changes. I would probably have to bring in the management services director to speak to those plans.
Sure. Cause when I, when I see, you know, one point, from a one point five million to two point six million, that's a significant increase. And understanding how much of that is from vacancies versus how much of that is from rate increases or plan changes. Right? So if you've changed it to a higher benefit plan.
Yes.
Then that impacts the cost, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
So, and you know, quite frankly, I mean, health insurance, two point six million dollars is substantial. So it's something that we need to be looking at and understanding. It's one of those detailed line items. That we need to understand and it's one, something that we should be tracking. I mean, as I've said before, it's, you know, things like insurance costs, health insurance costs.
Sure.
And those are big ticket items that, and utilities, right?
Yeah, they're material.
Right, they're material.
Yeah. And so what we can do, so we're, you know, obviously we're taking notes as we're going through this. So we'll, on these things, as they're being brought up, we will, we will come back, we'll look at the data and we will break down those changes, those costs, and we'll also, we'll follow up and respond to these type of questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I add something, Mr. Sharp? So I, I heard earlier that there's planned for more reports or additional reporting, some kind of monthly report. I'm not sure how often you do something like this where it's
Correct.
similar to the mid-year report, but have we, have we considered doing, adding all of an extra column, which is variance analysis? So we can have a lot of this. Yeah. Okay. So that it's actually written out ahead of time and
Sure.
answering these questions where you're unprepared.
Yeah. And we will be, so we'll basically, we'll be running, you know, year-to-date reports, budget to actuals, variance. And, and I don't want to call it a variance. It's the remaining balance of the budget. So it's not a variance. I want to be clear about that. There's a, there's a big distinction there.
John, you, you know what we're talking about when we're talking about variance analysis. Come on.
When we're talking about variance analysis, we're comparing budget to actual. And that's a remaining balance. So we budget, so in this example here, we're budgeting twenty-six point seven million dollars, right?
We're also, we're also looking, we're also looking at the variance to the prior year.
Yeah.
So you're comparing it to the prior year. That's not a variance, that's a comparison. So I want to be clear about those terms. And we can, and we can do that.
I, I have a degree in it. I, I understand those terms very well.
Okay.
So I, I don't need you to explain to me the difference between variance.
Okay.
Okay. I understand the terminology well. I think you have a number of people up here who all nodded their heads the exact same way because we all understand it.
So variance is a budget to an actual and that's, that's the definition of it. It's that simple. I don't know why we're having this conversation.
Well, you know what? If you actually produced a report that showed it, we could have a conversation. So I, I've been, I've been asking for that for a while.
Let's, let's continue with your presentation. We, we have a, we have a lot to, to discuss and determine today.
But, but to respond to Commissioner Rossi, we can definitely produce that report. Okay. Okay. So, so moving on with this. Stephanie, this is not really responding at this point.
There you go.
So here is another component of, for the headcount. So here is, here is what the vacancies were as of December thirty-first. And, and so one of the, one of the problems with this agency has always been, we, we always have quite a few vacancies here. And, and of course you can see that there's, you know, police always i- is, is having the largest, having the most difficult time doing recruiting. And so that's why we're seeing so many vacancies within the public safety. Uh, community development has, you know, one. Finance, even though right now this is zero, as of the next day of this, we have one on there. And as of December, we have a thirteen percent vacancy factor for our full-time employees. We, on the next slide over, we have for our part-time positions here and you can see here, so we have twenty-five positions that are unfilled right now. But a lot of the, the part-time is due to seasonal, seasonality with that. So here, this is, this table here is really to reflect how the budget changed between the adopted budget and the, what we're proposing for the mid-year adjustments in here. And so in here, you'll see in the original budget, the original revenues were thirty-nine point five million dollars. You will see on the next page that the expenditures were thirty-nine point one million dollars. So revenues were about four hundred thousand dollars higher in our original estimates in there. And then the other component of this, we had a small amount of transfers in. And I wanted to break this out from the prior, the prior presentation so that it's, it's not commingled in there. So then moving over on the expenditure side. So when, when, when we look at this in, in totality, the transfers are the largest component that's affecting fund balance at this point. So with the ongoing revenues, the ongoing expenditures, they're basically in balance. What's, what's always going to be an area that the city has discretion in spending generally relates to certain types of programs that they, that they choose to pursue. So I want to, and so that's how we end up where the fund balances decline. We're showing a decline originally in the adopted budget of a million eight on there. And in our reserve estimate would be eleven million, eight seventy on there. When we go back to our revised here, we have several things in here. And so the first component of this is the adjustments to our estimates on revenues. And so in here, we, we have so here, we have five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars downward revision to our revenues. And that's primarily driven from a couple of things in here. The sales tax is the one ninety-six and the sixty-six. That's about a hundred, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in there between our Bradley Burns and our Measure A. And then we have in our area, what we refer to as charges for services. And the bulk of that is really coming from our planning fees. And so our planning fees have declined by approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And we have the details on all of the revenues, by the way, in the attachments in here. So that you can see all, the total composition of all the adjustments to revenues and appropriation. So the total revenue adjustments, estimates have been reduced by five hundred and eighty-one thousand. The, on the expenditure side of things, we had, you know, for the first three quarters, we had four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of adjustments on there. And then we have, and then we have our mid-year request. So in our mid-year request, and we have the detailed attachments on this that we, we can go into, you know, further along in the presentation. We have about thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand of adjustments from the city manager's department. We have two hundred and, two hundred and fifty thousand within community development. But I want to point something out with this number here. So this is related to primarily the Caltrans housing. And the city intentionally set aside reserves for this event. We have approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in reserves for Caltrans housing. So this is going to tap into that. So basically what happens from a mechanical standpoint, we basically reduce our reserves by this dollar amount. It then goes into the unassigned fund balance and then we appropriate it. But overall, fund balance does decline by this. So we're adjusting from reserve to unassigned and then we're doing an appropriation on there. The other, the other thing in here, so we have also, we have community services is forty thousand and that's really for the Fourth of July. But one of the things I want to point out here, this is really just to cover the additional costs for this year. So the Fourth of July event is always split between two years because of the timing of it. So there's things that we have to do preparatory gearing up to the event. And those costs are born in twenty-three, twenty-four in this, for, for right now. And then there are additional costs that we, will be born in twenty-four, twenty-five. So this component is only a piece of the overall cost of the Fourth of July event. The other thing in here, so finance, we have, we have sixty-six thousand dollars of, of proposed adjustments. And again, we can go into the details on that. And then the other large area is really management services. And that is really driven by updates from our, our city attorney's office, Richards, Watson, Gershon, that's driving that. The total requests are seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. So to put it in context, last year, we had over two million dollars of mid-year adjustments. So this has shrunk down quite a bit. And that's generally because we've cleaned things up, really. That's really what that's all about. The other thing I want to point out here, and we're going to go into more detail on this in further slides, is we have capital improvement plan projects where during the budget process, you know, I work with Public Works and they give me estimates of what they planned to spend last year, which it makes me, which allows me to determine what the balances will be for twenty-three, twenty-four. At the end of the year, when we true up everything, then I have final numbers. I can compare what the actuals are to those estimates. And then I make adjustments in this year for those, those changes. So we had about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of rollovers. And again, I'll go over that in just a couple of minutes. But this transfer here, that's what it's related to. It's related to CIP projects that are being funded by the general fund.
John, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. I see where we have first quarter, city council approved budget adjustment, second quarter, and then another adjustment for two hundred and eleven thousand dollars
Yes.
in February.
Yes.
Are the changes to revenue through February or are they through December?
These, these changes here are through February, but the changes really are through December. So in other words, we've booked, so as, as everybody knows, you know, the finance department right now is pretty strapped. And so we have booked all of the adjustments through February, but they really pertain year-to-date through December. Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question. It just was a little confusing the way it's presented. That's.
Understood. And I apologize for that.
No, I, I am, I'm confused on the transfer. So the transfers out that you have in column one, what is that referring to?
So the transfers out in column one, the two million, two sixty-seven, that was the original adopted
Okay.
on there. And what I'm doing, and, and I know where you're going with this and I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to reflect this is, these are the additions. So we've, we're adding in an additional a hundred and eleven thousand to that two million, two sixty-seven to arrive at a total transfers of two million, three seventy-eight.
And the hundred and eleven.
So I apologize for that.
The hundred and eleven thousand is for what?
The one, the hundred and eleven thousand is for CIP carryover projects that are being funded by the general fund. And I have, further in the presentation, I have more detailed slides where you can see the composition of that.
Okay. I was confused because in the original document that you gave us, it said the transfers out were for the self-insurance fund. So that's.
Yes, and that was, that was a typo.
Okay.
That was a typo. Okay. So this is how we go from, from using one point eight million dollars of the general fund to three point seven million of the general fund for this year. And again, with this, we're still seventy percent above the reserve threshold.
So, oh, Chair, is Pete here? Can I just have a quick question? So, John, as you know, my concern is, so in twenty-three, we overblew the budget by one point five million. Right? We just, we got through saying that, right? Like we, we were going to, we projected a five hun- I mean, you weren't here then, but basically we overblew it by one point five.
Yes.
Now we're overblowing it by almost two million.
So, so I, it's an, I would not portray it the way you're describing it. And the reason why I. And the reason why I say that is, so these are planned appropriations. As in other words, it's not where, you know, we budgeted, you know, I'm just going to say 20 million and we spent 23 million. We actually planned on that with one major exception. And that was the C JPI invoice for 1.5 million.
Yeah, no, I, it was last year, I knew there was a lot of cleanup last year. I'm just, you know, again, I'm just, I look at these numbers and I look at the five-year projections and I just kind of.
Yeah.
We haven't addressed that yet, so I'm just letting you know, I'm just kind of like, yeah, this is not a good trend.
Right. And, and so I will follow up with that because I have, I have relevant information to address that.
Okay, great.
Okay. So on our, the next slide in here, and, and this really kind of speaks to your comment with that. So the original, the original 23, 24 budget, we, we, we were planning on transferring out 2,267,000 out of the general fund. And so that's really driving that 1.8 million reduction in fund balance. So these are all projects. And so a lot of this is, you know, it's from deferred maintenance. You know, Commissioner Rossi has made this comment in the past and others have as well, that, you know, whether it's infrastructure maintenance or other types of deferred maintenance and costs that haven't been addressed in the past. So what's going on right now is a lot of things are trying to be addressed. And so of course, we're drawing down on fund balance, if you will, on there. But here's, here's the thing that, that everyone really needs to keep in mind. All of these things in here, they're discretionary. So the council and the commission can decide, you know what, we don't want to do these things, right? So that's why it's really important when you're looking at these numbers to keep that in mind. So, you know, you can see these different projects there. Well, the commission and the council will say, you know what, sure, these are really cool things, but you know what? I don't want to spend the money right now. So, so there's a difference with the spending on there because of that discretionary capability. That's why this, that's why you're always going to hear me where I do not say from this information, why it's not a structural problem, but.
John.
Let me finish my comment here first, and I'm happy to, to hear you out. The one exception to this is the lighting and landscaping fund. Because we're subsidizing it. And, and as you can see in here, it's a very large component of the overall transfer of 2.2 million dollars in there. Now, we're going to come back to the commission and the council. We're going to do a really deep dive with the lighting and landscaping. So one of the things we want to do with that, we want to break down all of the cost structure. What are we doing in lighting and landscaping? And, and then looking at those cost structures and say, do we really want to keep them in the lighting and landscaping district? That's the first part of this. If those things, if the answer to that is yes, that they really belong there, then the next question is, do we want to reduce services to bring it down in alignment with our revenues? Do we want to continue to subsidize it? Do we want to seek other alternatives to this? You know, and there's other things, you know, and this is really getting, getting way ahead. So I'm, I'm going to let.
You know what?
Public Works speak to this.
I'm going to, I'm going to say something, John. I mean, it is getting way ahead because we're eight months into the year. So at this point, there is no adjusting on landscape and lightning and maintenance to change anything, whether it's to go out and do, you'd have to do a vote if you wanted to get more revenues. And that wouldn't happen until November. And then that wouldn't go into effect until next year. So at this point, that's not discretionary, it's an operating cost. And I guess I'm also looking at the rest of these, it's eight months into the year. So where, where are we on implementing what was budgeted for? So I think, I think that's probably more useful to know.
Sure. So on some of these, some of these projects have been completed, some of them have, have not.
Which ones?
So for example, the stormwater project, we, we will probably, in preliminary discussions that I had with Public Works, we're probably only going to spend around $100,000 of it this year. With the Royal Seaco project, it's same thing, we'll probably spend maybe 150,000. That's the rough estimates that I've received from Public Works. They're very preliminary numbers, but that's based on what they're seeing.
That's for completion or for?
Oh, no, no, not for completion, no.
Oh, this is.
Spent this year.
Okay.
Yeah. On there. And, and then again, so the lighting and landscaping has to be left in there because it's a policy decision. And so we can, we can propose to scale back costs, but it is a policy decision and so it was intentionally left in there for that reason.
But again, it's eight months into the year, so at this point, there's no proposing to scale the costs because this is the cost for this year.
So we will be, we will be discussing that in the next month.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So, but, but you're absolutely right. I, I don't disagree with that.
If we have, you know. Okay, there we go. So if, for example, there's, stormwater is only going to spend 100,000 this year. Isn't it possible then to reduce this, the 300,000 down to what is estimated to be spent? And move the 200,000 back into the general fund?
Yes, it's a valid question. And so we, we had, we actually had conversations about this, whether we should reduce the CIP. You know, the CIP is approximately 16 million. We had discussions whether we should at mid-year, you know, reduce them down or have discussions with commission and council during the budget development. And it was decided to have the discussions during the budget development cycle. So in the budget development cycle, you will see CIP scaled back. In other words, unprogrammed.
Adjustment number.
Which, which number, I'm sorry.
I mean, the, the deficit that we're looking at, the projected deficit of 3.7 million.
So again, it's not a deficit. We are intending, so we don't have to do these things. So as I mentioned with the, the CIP transfers, the 2.2 million, and these others, you can decide, you know what, we don't want to do it. So, so these are discretionary spending on there.
But you just said that it's decided that nothing would be done with CIP until the budget process.
That is correct. And with that said, we realize we're not going to spend as much as what has been programmed out.
Sure, but as of right now, it has, we're still.
It's programmed out.
It's programmed out.
Yeah.
And some of it in the projects are in progress, so.
Some of it, yes, yes. Yeah, for example, I think the phones, for example, are completed. The, I think the permit management software has been completed. The EV charging system, I don't think that's quite started yet. The agenda management system, I think that's well underway. The website is also well underway. So it's really, so the, the major things are going to be the stormwater, the San Rafael. And, and then in addition to that, is seeing how we start tracking within the lighting and landscaping fund on there. And then we, we haven't done anything with the library master plan yet as well. The.
The lighting and landscape fund is operating and it's doing services. So we, it's again, eight months out of the year, so we're already willing to that on the expenditures.
Okay.
So the, the library master plan hasn't started yet. But, and, you know, to your point of structural deficit, I, I'm not as concerned with one-time costs such that are capital costs. I'm completely concerned with the operating budget. So that is.
Absolutely.
That is where my focus is.
Sure.
So I understand that these are discretionary items and I do believe that we have, we do have money in the reserves. And we do have a nice reserve cushion. The issue is if we don't start managing our operating budget, that reserve cushion goes away quickly. So you're really saying that these items that were budgeted for is not the concern. It's how the operating budget is doing.
Right. Right, absolutely. Okay. So the next, the next slides here, these are just the projects from CIP from last year. And basically what we're, I'm just reflecting in here, these were what they were originally budgeted in 23. This was the original estimates or projections from Public Works. The call, the, the third column is what actually took place. And the fourth column is the variance with that, the remaining balance on there. And so you'll just see, you know, we've broken this down to, you know, in, in general categories from building and facilities, IT-related, library, community services, sewers, stormwater, streets, sustainability programs, transportation, water, and, and water. And so you'll see in there, the original estimate that they planned on spending in 23 was 1,265, but, but they only spent, you know, 533. So hence the $731,000 that we're rolling over into the new year. Now, what I want to also reflect on the next slide of that $731,000, here, here are the funding sources that support that $731,000. So as mentioned in that one table, you saw the 111,000 from the general fund. But here's all the other, other funds that support that total $731,000. And the next slide shows the projects in a more concise way. So here are all the projects that have carryover that affect that $731,000. Okay, now the next area that I want to talk about in here. Or talking a little bit about the reserves. So as I mentioned before, that 249,000, that's really coming out of the reserves. So that was planned in terms of we set aside money for this, this type of activity. The next thing I want to mention in here is really the state and local fiscal recovery funds or SLRF. And so we have a total amount, we received a total of 6, 6,590,000 of SLRF money. And last year, we spent 1,118,000 of it, which is leaving us a 4,900 and some odd change there. And this year, we have programmed out 160,000 for library radio frequency identification.
John, are you still speaking to the slide that's up on?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, this is not on the slide. This, what I'm talking about right now is not in the slide. So this is separate. So we have, it's in, it's in the staff report that was included with the agenda. And it's under the state and local fiscal recovery funds.
So John, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
In the staff report, it said that the city expended 1.1 million dollars to offset the first year of salary negotiations. Can you please explain that to me?
Sure. So the, 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 it was programmed out to use, use SLRF money to pay for the, I believe they described as the first year of the salary increase impact.
What is, what does that, so you're, what does that mean?
What does that mean? So it means that the, the net increase in salaries due to the labor negotiations is being covered by the SLRF money.
Why would you do that?
It was, it was programmed, this is what the council wanted to do.
I'm understanding that, but does the council understand that you're not supposed to use one-time revenues for ongoing expenditures?
So this was a, so this, this predated me. But nonetheless, the council decided how they wanted to program out the SLRF money.
Right.
And this, this was a component of that.
I understand, and that shows a weakness in, I don't know if it's council understanding or it's communication to council, that you are not supposed to use one-time revenues for ongoing expenditures. So then I'm, then what happened then to these salary increases? They got put into layered, they got it hidden in one budget and then layered into the next budget? Like, is that what happened? I'm just trying to.
No, no. And that's a, that's a really good question. So the salaries standalone, in other words, there's no impact. So whatever the salary costs are, is what in the, is what's recorded in the general ledger system. What we're doing is once we identified, we broke out all those costs and then we transferred 1,118,000 to the general fund because it was programmed that way. So we, we don't, so we're not reducing salary costs.
Okay.
We're not reducing salary.
You're not, you're not reducing what you're budgeting in the salary and doing.
Correct, because we want to keep that, otherwise you lose that visibility.
You're moving money into the general fund.
For, for covering.
So the general fund balance got increased by the 1.1. So then what, so what happened in?
No, no, you know what, I actually, let me step back, I have to apologize. That's incorrect. We actually moved those costs over to the SLRF fund. We created a SLRF fund because we wanted to track the cost for that. So I have to, I have to say it.
So.
Correct that.
All right, so let's, then in this budget in 23, 24, you put, you have 2.3 million for salaries and capital improvements. How much of it was salaries and how much was capital improvements?
They did not break it down.
Okay. So were salary costs moved over into the SLRF fund for this year?
No. We have not moved any salary cost over to the SLRF fund. For, for 23, 24, we have moved no cost over to the SLRF fund so far.
So it was, I understand you weren't here, but I mean, something first, since we have several council members here, grossly inappropriate to have moved the salary expenses into the SLRF funds. It was grossly inappropriate. Because that, that's not where it's supposed to be. You know, it was not, you were not supposed to move the salary expenses. And I think that's part of the challenge here because then the actuals, so when you're doing.
I understand your point. So it's, and in one way, I don't disagree with you, but I'll say this. What happened here is not uncommon. Many cities have done what South Pasadena has done.
Correct, like the city of San Gabriel, which is in the top 10 worst cities in California.
But other, a lot, a lot of cities.
That might be, that might be a lot of cities, but it's not appropriate to do because it actually obfuscates what's happening and what's your, and what's, you know, to track on a budgetary level and an understanding of what your expenses are. It's, a lot of cities do it, but a lot of cities are run really poorly. And so I think that's, it's not the way you do things. SLRF funds, any one-time funds, and I'm saying this to your, the three council members sitting in the audience as well, one-time revenues are supposed to be used for one-time expenditures. They are not supposed to be used for ongoing expenditures.
Right.
And I hope that the council members understand this, that they need to stop approving this.
Yeah.
They need to stop saying that it's okay, it's not okay.
So.
But I, I believe that the.
But I have to, I have to, not rebut this, but I have to add a comment to this. So it's a general guideline. Nothing more. It's a general guideline that you generally do not want to use one-time revenues to support ongoing revenues. Sure. However, when you're developing your budget, you're looking at all kinds of things. There's a lot of dynamics that are going with that. And there may be reasons why you're doing it. And so, you know, you could, you could, you could argue and say, well, you know, best practices are different things like that. And as a general rule, sure, but it's not, it's not an absolute.
Right.
So if a council decides that they want to use this, they do have that discretion. And you do have $6 million available to use as you see fit.
But what I don't understand is, I've heard the term best practices used over and over again.
Yes.
But when we bring up best practices, it's, well, you don't really have to do that. So it seems like it's best practices when you like the best practices versus doing best practices when it's appropriate to do them. And again, and I'm going to go back to this for a second, which is, why isn't it spelled out? So they have 2.3 million dollars for salaries and capital improvements projects. What's the breakdown? That it just needs to be broken down. Why, why don't you have that number?
They, they have decided to program it the way they have.
Who is they?
The, the, the council, the community.
So the council, the council has decided to program.
This is.
Okay, Councilmember Braun. Okay, Councilmember Braun. How did you decide to program the two point three? Do you know if it's, how much of it's for salaries and how much of it's for capital improvement project?
My, you know what? My census was just presented and we approved it. I, I don't want to misspeak. I'd have to go back and look, but that would be my guess.
John, can you add that to the list of things you're going to do some research on, please? See how that, that was handled in council.
Sure.
I had that, that does predate you, I assume?
Yes, yeah.
Not twenty?
Not for twenty-three, twenty-four.
No, for twenty, for twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm just, I'm rolling it over. That's basically what I'm doing. I'm looking at what, what happened in twenty-three, and here's the residual balance on it.
John, we're not asking you to cast dispersions on your predecessors nor the actions of the city council. We're asking you to report what happened, and then we will ask, we will shine a light on that city council as we believe appropriate. Okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you for.
Chair Giuliani, may I please chime in? Chair and members of the Finance Commission, City Manager Chaparian, may I please chime in on this question?
Would you hold, I'm sorry?
Uh, good evening, Chair. City Manager Chaparian, would I, would I be able to answer the question that Commissioner Rossi is asking?
Yes, go ahead, City Manager.
Good evening, Commissioner. Um, if you would please indulge me, there is a reason why that, that decision was made at the time to use SLURF funding for year one of the MOU negotiations. As many of you know, when we negotiate the MOUs, which is a memorandum of understanding for our different unions, with our different unions, there's very specific cost allocations. And Commissioner Rossi, you make a good point. Why would we use SLURF funding to fund that? That was actually a very specific strategic decision that was made with the council at the time. And the reason for that, when we negotiated the three-year contract with our different unions, year one costs were significant. And the reason for that was because we were adjusting the salaries, but we were also providing one-time benefits to our staff as a result of the pandemic. At the time, when council was looking at the different ways to finance the MOU, the SLURF requirements had changed. Prior to that, the federal government had very specific restrictions on how you could use SLURF. SLURF was intended to be funding for cities specifically coming out of the pandemic. And the initial set of regulations had a very detailed list of ways you could use SLURF. As we were going through the budget process and negotiating our MOUs, the regulations changed in the midst of that. The regulations changed to allow for cities to have a lot more flexibility in how SLURF would be used. Many cities just took the SLURF funding they received and they put it in their general fund. Now, whether or not we agree with how that was done, it was the ability to be able to alleviate what cities had experienced as a result of the pandemic. In the city of South Pasadena, we had several council discussions on how we were going to use SLURF. Um, I would say we probably had four different, maybe even more discussions with city council in public meetings. And one of the decisions was made as we were doing our labor negotiations was because year one costs were going to be significant because we were providing one-time payments on top of whatever the cost for salary and benefits were. We provided one-time bonus pay for our staff as a result of the pandemic. We decided that SLURF was the best source of funding for year one only. So that was a strategic decision because it was a higher cost and we were able to do that. Um, the decision was made to use SLURF. So I hope I gave some background and was able to answer some of the questions that you all had. Thank you for indulging me.
I think, I think the challenge is that, I think having it paid for, the, the one-time bonuses for pandemic is completely appropriate. The question is, how much of that was for that versus salary increases? And then looking into year two, what is it? How much of it is for salaries and how much is it capital improvement projects? Those are two very different things. So.
Absolutely, but I just wanted to reiterate the point.
Hold on one second, I'm not done. I mean, one of the challenges that I've had with a lot of the reporting is the mixing. And it's always interesting to me what gets broken out into individual line items and what's pushed together. Um, whenever I see things pushed together like that, it raises red flags for me. Why, why could you tell me a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for library and then you say two point three for salaries, capital improvement somewhere? So like I asked the question again, what is it? Is it salaries or capital improvement? Give me the breakdown.
City Manager, you had another comment?
Um, I just wanted to say, we can certainly give you a detailed breakdown for the costs of the MOU for the three-year. Um, I don't think we have that level of detail this evening, but that is certainly.
That's not what I was asking. I was actually asking the breakdown between the, for the two point three billion dollars, it says for salaries and capital improvement projects. So the breakdown I'm asking is not that level of detail. I'm just asking you how much of it is for salaries and how much is it for capital improvement projects?
We can provide you that level of detail. I don't think we have the breakdown this evening, but we can certainly provide you with that information. I just wanted to address the specific question that I kept hearing regarding SLURF and why it was used for year one. So I certainly hope I've answered your question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So something else I wanted to add to, to this, uh, hate to put it as a side note per se. So even with all this programmed activity, we still have a, we still have a remaining balance of one point four million unprogrammed of SLURF money that is available to use. And as the city manager mentioned, the state or the fed, federal, the Housing, Urban and Development, who manages the, um, ARPA American Recovery Plan Act and State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund program, changed the rule. So the original rule was if for any loss of revenue due to the pandemic, you could use that amount of money to, uh, to cover those lost revenues. They then, uh, in early January of twenty-two, they changed the rule and they said up to ten million dollars, uh, could be used for any municipal services. So I kind of equate it this way. Think of it almost like a standard deduction versus an itemized deduction. If you're happy with the ten million dollars threshold, all of that could be rolled in the general fund and you can use it for any municipal service you want on there. Anything above ten, ten million dollars, you had to follow the strict, uh, protocols and categories for expenditures, which are very restrictive. A lot of cities, uh, even today, have had a hard time spending the money above the ten million dollar threshold on there. For example, the city of Santa Ana has like sixty-two million dollars of ARPA money. So they, they very much had a difficult time above the ten million dollars to figure out how to program this, uh, into those very restrictive categories.
Thank, thank you for clarifying, John. I, I think that this should be for you instructive. If we detect as a, as a finance commission, if we detect that those dollars will, uh, would be used for other than one-time costs, we will be calling it out.
Sure, sure. But, but realize, this is, this is a council decision on how they want to spend money.
But council has already asked us to make recommendations.
Understood. No, I totally understand that.
Perfect.
Okay, so, um, can we go back to the presentation at this point? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Okay, so now back to where we were in the staff report. So I want to talk a little bit about the lighting and landscaping, uh, on there. So with the lighting and landscaping, we're estimating nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue for twenty-three, twenty-four. They've programmed out one point seven million dollars, which is creating the shortfall that we're using, that we're using transfers to support right now. Now, there's a couple of things to keep in mind with that. One, that's what they, that's what the budget, what they've budgeted for appropriations. It's really going to depend on what they actually spent in the lighting and landscaping. And the reason why I say that is in twenty-three, uh, they budgeted a similar amount, one point seven million. They actually only spent a million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So it was a, it was a much lower figure in there. So if, if we were to extrapolate that going forward, that has a potential, a four hundred thousand dollar reduction in the transfers to the, or a reduction to the transfers from the general fund. Now, that's pure speculation at this point, so I want to be crystal clear about that. I don't know right now, you know, how we're tracking and what, what we, what we'll end up with at the year end. I'll have a better idea probably in a couple of months, uh, on there. But there is that potential. The other thing, uh, that's, that's really important to note, um, is, so when we talk about, you know, say the first three quarters, right, of where the council has approved four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of, of appropriations. There was a reason for that. So I created a zero-based budget. And so what that meant was, they don't have a pot of money. Say, for example, you have professional services and it's a million dollars. You don't have a, a billion-dollar pot to use on anything you want. It is very much programmed out. Say, for example, if it's split five ways, two hundred thousand dollars for five different tasks. If one task is going over budget, you don't get to tap into the other three, the other four, right? And so, so because of that, staff had to go to the council and ask for appropriations. The reason for that was twofold. One, I had to instill a structure that did not exist before.
We appreciate it.
And, and so that was the first thing is like, no, if this is the, if this is what you're appropriating for twenty-three, twenty-four, we need to see how you're really tracking to what you've estimated. Other, otherwise, if you start co-mingling, we've just lost that picture. So, so that was, that was, that was the primary reason for doing a zero base. And then the other thing is just confidence in prior year's budgets on there. I, basically, I started from ground zero with it. So it was twofold with that. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is, it is highly likely that we will have savings in these other line items that haven't been utilized or that won't be utilized by the end of the year.
So I, I think it is highly likely, just looking through the numbers, um, myself, as I went through the GL and threw some things together. But the, the issue is that by the mid-year, and this is, I go back to this, you gave us some details for the revenues, but you didn't give us details for the actual expenditures. And, and as well as looking at estimates. And that's something that has to start happening at the mid-year because mid-year should then be looking at not just appropriating money, but whether or not you should be sending, sending money back.
Yeah, reprogram, yeah, yeah, unprogrammed.
Right, so, and that, that's the hard thing is what, what, you know, we're looking at is saying, well, we need more money.
How do you discern that?
Right, like we need more money, bring it from the general fund. And then once you put it in there, there's a lot of discretion.
Yes.
Right? So that, that is.
Just like the pot of money I was talking about.
Right, I mean, that, that's the challenge that I'm having with not having more detail on the expenditures.
Okay.
Um, because really at the mid-year, and quite frankly, I mean, we, our budget policy, right, is that we're supposed to strive for a balanced budget.
Yes.
And that is what keeps you from burning through the reserves. And yes, I agree with that reserve should be there for, you know, one-time costs and capital, and we shouldn't just hold on to money. But we do really need to get a good sense of our operating budget.
Yes.
And since we had a deficit last year, which should have been part of the consideration for the mid-year, was saying, how do we, what did we over-budget? What did we, what can be re-appropriated? Because it's, it's, it looks like it's saying, we need three point seven million, right? Or with that seven million, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and that, that's when I, when I'm looking at the different mid-year budget adjustments, there are things we're saying, well, yes, I understand that, but it could have been done as a reappropriation from something else happening in the existing budget. I mean, I totally understand the Caltrans thing, but my, one thing on the Caltrans is, again, a best practice is, it's an investment. So it should have an ROI with it, expected ROI. And I don't understand coming to, uh, the council, asking them to appropriate the funds before you've been willing to do that level of analysis. And I think that that's been, what's been missing here for a very long time is analysis. Because once the funds are appropriated, I don't think anything comes back to the council. I think it's like, okay, we're off and running. So I mean, that's, that is my single hold, because I know that the money is there in the reserves. My single hold on the Caltrans homes is, is you should have an analysis. Because that's how you bring some discipline to the financial practice. And you say, okay, what are we looking to get? This is a lot of money that, you know, we're, we're talking about the investment side. I'm not talking about the expenditure side, but I'm talking about the potential revenue. It, that needs to have analysis beforehand, so then you could say, how did our broker do?
Yes.
How was it towards our expectation? These are major assets.
Yeah.
And so that practice has to start now. Um, and then the rest of these, I mean, there are things you talked about, the Fourth of July event. So I understand you have half the year before and half the next year, but.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
It was, you know, it was under-budgeted for, it appears.
Yes, yes, it was.
Um, this appropriation doesn't include staffing costs, but staffing costs over time was a major component of the under-budgeting from last year. We, the Finance Commission, didn't receive the report at all about it, which I have a problem with too. Why would appropriations go before the Finance Commission without the detail and then have a meeting immediately after our joint meeting where the city council gets the details of like, okay? That's, that's interesting, you know?
Point, point taken.
Yeah.
Point taken.
And, and so, I mean, I can go through these. I don't want to beat dead horses on this. I do also say, like, the management services, I was a little bit confused because as I was looking at the GL, um, it looks like legal is under city managers' department, on legal. That's what I see.
Yeah.
Um, and so then there is another legal amount under the management services operational budget, which has been barely touched. And I believe that legal amount is typically for workers' comp?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
So there, there's been a consolidation in the past. Legal was under the city managers. We have shifted that to management services. So legal cost for, you know, the, the typical activity is recorded with management services.
That's, that's not what your GL shows.
So.
So I just wanted you to know that, is that I went to the GL and the GL has.
So we do have primarily the legal under the city manager's office and HR has their own legal as well, which is a smaller amount, but it's not the same. So they're used for different things. Yeah.
That's, that's right. So the, the legal is, I mean, I actually thought legal should be separated out completely. But the legal right now under both the budget and the general ledger is under the city managers. And then there's a second legal under the management services, and that was typically for HR-related legal.
Hang on one second. So we, so we have budgeted for legal services under management services, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars on there. And then let me jump over to city manager.
I mean, that's definitely the way it is in the GL.
Oh, yeah.
And it's definitely the way it is in the budget.
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at city manager's budget right now.
It looks like there's four twenty there as well. No?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, and then there's a smaller number that's under management services. I remember, please.
Actually, I think you have, you have legal services, four twenty on city manager, and another fifty-three for legal services, Caltrans housing.
I'm just looking at the budget document right now. Bear with me for a minute. Not seeing it and not sitting, seeing it in the city manager.
Commissioner Rossi, uh, important point. I, what, what do, what would you like us to take away from this and apply to the twenty-four, twenty-five budgeting process?
Well, so I think it was, it's two things. One, I mean, even on this particular one, and what, what we said last week, and what I'm a little bit frustrated about this meeting, is that we needed to have better detail on this, you know, on the report, including, uh, the mid-year financials, which showed the variances and the, uh, actual expenditures on a more detailed level.
Right.
And we didn't get any changes between last week and this week. And so we literally just got the same exact packet that we rejected last week, sent back to us this week. So I, I would like to see better reporting. And that's, that's my big takeaway from anything. Again, there are certain things like, don't shove a num, you know, five different items that have nothing related. Again, there are certain things like, don't shove a number, you know, five different items that have nothing related to each other, and then give me a total number, and I have to go do the work to go figure out, you know, what's for Caltrans properties? What's for Holy Family? What's for Moffitt's Liberation? Because I've got to go back to these tables, like, just put it in there. It's bullet points. It's easy. Let me know exactly what it's for, and so that we have an understanding what it is that we're doing, and where there are areas that we need to have a larger discussion and analysis.
Well, I will take as a-
Let me speak to the legal services for a minute. So that 420 is under Management Services, it's not City Manager, period. Here's the budget book, I can walk you through it, it matches the GL, it's under Management Services.
So Commissioner Rossi, there was a time when the GL line item may have been technically under the City Managers Office, but with the reorganization, that line item then moved to Management Services. So although the Springbrook system might show it as under City Managers, it is now budgeted with Management Services.
Thank you.
And for more clarity, there is separate line items in HR for insurance purposes for workers' comp and other general liability, as well as in community development for Caltrans.
Thank you for your help, Stephanie. Thank you for your help. John, let's get back on track here. And we need to get finished with 2023, 24 mid-year adjustments, and then get on to what we can anticipate by the end of the year, and then on to the budgeting process, which begins next month.
So really, this really kind of concludes for the mid-year on there. And, but I want to state that we will address all the questions that have been raised on there. And at this point, we will then shift over, and I'm going to turn this over to Stephanie regarding the minutes, the review of the minutes for August 24th, September 28th, and November 8th.
We can't do that without, we need to vote on whether or not to present this.
That is, that is correct. Yes.
So-
We can hang tight for a minute.
So the recommendation is that the Finance Commission review, which we have done ad nauseam, and approve the mid-year report for City Council review. Do I have a motion?
Wait a second.
Roll call, please, Stephanie.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, Commissioner Quaid, you wanted to vote to send it to council for review?
Whether or not we should.
Or whether or not you should, okay.
In its current state.
But yeah, that's more of a discussion topic.
So I would suggest that there be a discussion among the Finance Commission members about whether, what you want to do before you make it, someone makes a motion.
Okay, let's take a short break, Finance Commission. Let's meet up here on the DL, please.
A health break?
We're taking a health break, and then we're going to continue.
Gotcha.
Fine.
All right. So five-minute health break, we'll be back at eight.
Thank you.
Thirty. Thirty.